Hi, we're going to call this thing to order. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending the October 3, 2022 Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a light agenda tonight, and a nice crowd here. Good to see some of the same old faces and some new faces. Glad you guys could make it with us tonight. We have nobody signed up for public comments, so I'll get to that in a minute. I'd like to have Vice Chairman Almond do the invitation and the pledge.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for this time that you've given us. Thank you for the freedom to live in America and all the blessings that come with that. I pray for our commissioners tonight. Pray that you give each one of us discretion and wisdom and help us make the right decisions for this county. And bless our meeting and bless our county. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Almond. You guys have had a chance to see the agenda. If no one has any modifications, I'd like to see the motion to approve this presented. We have a motion by Vice Chairman Almond.
Second, Commissioner.
Second by Commissioner. Any further discussion? Almond, favor eye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Agenda is approved. Public comments. We have no one that has signed up for public comments tonight, but I wanted to extend the opportunity, if there's any, anybody there that has something tonight that they want to speak to, I'll give you a chance to step up here real quick. Okay? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. Ms. Bailey, where are you at? This is the NC 731 Fork Road.
Yes. Let me log back into this computer real quick. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. The first item that we have before you is ZA 22-14. This is a request by Josh Byrd to rezone a .95 acre parcel located on a portion of a parcel that's located at 48218 NC 731 Norwood. It currently sits at RA, which is residential agricultural, but he is asking for it to be rezoned to general business or GB. The property currently contains in all 6.46 acres. He plans to purchase just .95 acres of it in order to construct a storage facility and yard for holding equipment and materials used in his landscaping business. The parcel is currently owned by Pamela Myers and has been used as a commercial greenhouse and garden center, which is permitted by right in the RA zoning district. The subdivision would be allowed by the subdivision ordinance. No other portion would be rezoned. This is, that .95 is the only portion that would be. The property is not located in the watershed area but is in a growth area designated, oh, excuse me, is in a growth area designated around Norwood. And I'm going to move on. So this is just an aerial view of the property, and the section that is outlined in red is the portion that he is requesting to be rezoned, that .95 acres. And this is just a zoned version of it. So you can see there's Norwood, right, just right by 731, and there's some M2 industrial just up the street on Fork Road, up the road on Fork Road. The town of Norwood is in the process of adopting a new land use plan, which identifies the intersection of Fork Road and 731 and the intersection at NC 731 and US 52 as potential commercial districts. While there is no commercial use in the immediate area, this is at a crossroads that could see future development and involves a parcel which has previously seen commercial activity with the garden center and the greenhouse. And this just shows that it is currently in a growth area, that light shade of green. And then, this is a image of the survey, the proposed survey that he has. The traffic recorded in 2020 on Fork Road was 700 vehicles per day, while traffic on NC 31 was recorded at 1,300 vehicles per day near US 52. Traffic on 731 near PD River was recorded in 2019 as 2,700 vehicles per day. There is traffic coming from Mount Gilliod area into Norwood and turning north onto Fork Road. Water is available. Mr. Byrd does not plan on using any facilities that would require a septic system. This is the structures that are currently on the property and were used for the greenhouse purposes. They do still sit there. And I believe that is all. The planning board met on September 12th and voted unanimously to record approval, to recommend approval of Mr. Byrd's rezoning. I haven't received any public concern or opposition to the request, or phone calls for that matter. I will say that the county does require that any commercial zone parcel does need a 10-foot buffer around it, and we do allow, depending on existing vegetation, to be used as that. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
You're welcome.
Before we get on to public comments, because I do have to have a public hearing for theirs, do I have any questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I got one.
Commissioner.
Bailey, on the 10-foot buffer in the pictures that you have up now, which shows a fence on that property, will that fence be extended on the parcel that's going to be rezoned?
That would be up to him. We wouldn't necessarily require a fence, but we do require a buffer.
Okay. Will the fence have any type of low page screening or anything on it if it's going to store equipment? Is that on?
If it's outside displays of equipment, then yes.
Anything else from commissioners? Okay. I want to clear the public hearing open. Is there anyone from the public tonight that would like to speak for or against this? Okay. Seeing none, I want to clear the public hearing portion closed. It's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the zoning request for 1.95 acres of the parcel located at 48218 NC 731 Highway Norwood be approved. This is located in a growth area and proposed use is consistent with the current land use plan. It is an appropriate location, commercial property used near crossroads or a main thoroughfare.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Efer. Second by Commissioner Fur. Any further discussion? Almond, favor eye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Next item on tonight's agenda, another zoning text amendment. This is going to be Bob Rensberg.
Good evening, commissioners. Good to see you this evening and appreciate you considering this particular item. This is kind of an interesting case. We have a situation in the county that we're trying to, you might say, come up with a solution for. The memo from Dr. Ekman, I'm sure you've read. We've proposed a text amendment that would allow parcels 12 acres or larger and zone general business to accommodate RV or camper trailer campground. Currently, the general business district allows for commercial recreational activities excluding racetracks, but does not allow for camping. Facilities of this type in the GB district may host special events or festivals, which would benefit from vendors using RVs or camping trailers. This is currently occurring at the Big Lick Festival Park between Oakboro and Red Cross. This location has been allowing recreational vehicles for contractors to stay there for housing while working on large projects in the areas such as pipelines, solar farms, industrial plants, road projects, and so on. This has been a growing trend with contractors working for several months in one location. Big Lick Festival Park is now under new local ownership, and the new owners have plans to expand the camping on the property along with a new bath house and a sewage collection system. This work cannot be permitted, excuse me, under the current zoning regulations. Instead of rezoning the parcel to RA from the current ZB, GB, and then having to get a special use permit, we thought this might be a better solution, is simply to amend the ordinance in the GB district and then put this kind of large restriction of 12 acres on that, because that parcel is about 15 acres, and there are only, as Dr. Ekman's memo mentions, there are only two other parcels in the county that are zoned GB that are larger than 12 acres. And they're out on NC 73, 2427, east of Albemarle out there. One's owned by Joel Malden, the other's by Todd Chad. And those properties are not likely to be turned into this sort of thing anyway. So really, in a way, this text amendment really only applies to that one parcel currently in the county. But there is that option that if someone wanted to consider a campground of this type, they could apply for rezoning and get to get there or work through the system to come up with a way to do that through this. But this really primarily applies to the Big Lick Festival Park location. Couple of other changes needed to be done to make this kind of appropriate, and that, you can see, here's the actual text amendment. The section 610 would be amended to allow camping, camper trailers in campground facilities and recreational vehicles, and of course, provide for the campground facilities on 12 acres or more. I think it's important to point out that the campground regulations, which I believe were included in your packets, were, will still be in place. Now, that doesn't, that's in place both in the current RR district, where we do allow campgrounds, and then for this new allowance in the general business district, if you vote to approve this. And again, there's a little tweak in the language about septic systems, because the proposal in Big Lick Festival Park is to have a central collection system as opposed to relying on simply a dump station type. But our ordinance currently said had to be a dump station type situation, and so this gives the, a little more flexibility to the property owner and developer to do that. This was recommended after some considerable discussion and all with the planning board unanimously for approval. I know it's a little bit complicated, but I'll be glad to try to address any questions you may have regarding this.
Thank you, Bob. This also, if I'm not mistaken, well, yep, this has a public hearing as well, so before we do that, commissioner questions? Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. When you do a campground or somebody proposes a campground, do they have to do like a site plan, like a subdivision with the lots, how big they are, the roads and everything?
Correct. Correct. So, yes. So that, again, back to the campground regulations, I believe it's 2,500 square feet per campsite. So the layout and that sort of thing is, has to be presented to us, and trying to remember, I know in the old regulations anyway, we may have updated this, but it used to have to be approved by the planning board, but I don't think that, I think it's staff approval now.
So is he, I know this is a text change.
Sure.
Really don't have nothing to do with the project that's out there at the park, but is he planning on enlarging that?
He does plan on enlarging that. So currently, and I guess I can say this, the, you know, we're complaint driven. Quite frankly, until he came to us with a proposal for a bath house and upgrades to that facility, I really didn't realize this was happening on that property. You know, you really can't see it from the highway, or from, what is that, 205 passing by. You'd have to drive up into the property to realize what's happening. And I just, I think it originally started with the idea of, let's do it for festivals and events, and then people said, well, can we, can we stay here a little longer? We've got contractors coming in, and we need to stay. And so it just kind of evolved. And that's the way a lot of things happen with businesses and properties around the county. So we didn't, we didn't realize it was happening. But anyhow, the, yes, the folks that currently own the property are looking at expanding it. In fact, they're planning to put additional campsites, up to about 40 campsites, because they're currently about 20. Basically double the capacity and put that where the current tractor pool location is. So the center part, if you're familiar with that site, the center part where the barn, I think, and the house or cabin and so on, those, that kind of layout, where they usually made the festival grounds, that will continue to still be there, and they do plan to continue the various festivals that have been going on. They obviously don't plan to continue to do the tractor pull.
See? I'm trying to figure out how to word this. So the campground now will be, it will be conforming under the current?
The current campground is not conforming.
Not conforming, that's okay, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah. And that, and again, that, when, again, when they approached us with the idea we need to permit this, we were like, well, wait a minute. One, we didn't know what's happening. Two, this is not allowed in the GB district. So how do we?
In fact, you've had no complaints is a good thing, too.
Well, that's true.
It's well maintained, nobody can do about it, it's not been abused or?
Right. And the proposed changes seem to, you know, it looks good. I always put it that way. It looks good. I mean, obviously, we don't have, we can't bind them to that until they actually, because we've not accepted an application from them, because it just, it wasn't legal, wasn't allowed.
Thanks, sir. Before I go to public hearing, anything else, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question of Bob.
Commissioner Mahon, go ahead.
And it's probably in this material I've read, it scanned it. What's the maximum length of time someone can reside in a camper or travel trailer at a campground?
Good question. In our ordinance dealing with campgrounds, that section, it's 10 months in one site, one location. And that's, you know, and that, that could be amended as well, but you obviously need, you think about the length of one of these projects for pipeline or something like that, then that, that's why at this point, the planning board chose to leave it at 10 months.
And the trick around that, I know from experience having RV myself, is you just move from site 41 to site 42?
Entirely possible. We joked a little bit about whether we needed to get a chalk stick or something to go out and chalk the tires and see what had moved, but it, very difficult to enforce, obviously. You know, we're not driving through Norwood Family Campground every 12 months to see if the same campers are in the same places.
There's quite a, there's quite a huge market in Stanley County for RV style campsites. I mean, Norwood has backed up for a year.
Right. Well, yeah. So if you think about, really, Norwood Camping Center, the Cotton Patch Gold Mine Facility, and of course, Mar Mountain are really your only campgrounds officially in the county at this point. You have a couple of other camping locations that seem to occur. One's at the fairgrounds with the American Legion Post 76, and the other, of course, now is Big Lick Festival Park. I'll just toss this out there as well, and that is, of course, it's, you know, those projects that these contractors come for may not always be in Stanley County. These may be Cabarrus County projects, or Mecklenburg County projects, or Union County projects. And in a way, it might be a blessing to us economically to have them staying here as opposed to somewhere in Cabarrus County or somewhere else. So there's a little bit of a, that was kind of in the back of my mind as I was recommending this to the planning boards, thinking, well, let's keep them here. And again, if we get complaints, we'll start dealing with those complaints if they come.
Commissioner Barber, you have one?
Well, yeah, you almost addressed it, but my big concern was enforcing the problems. And I know Mr. Austin will do a good job of making things right. It's just that I'm afraid sometimes it gets out of control, and as long as we don't have complaints, I don't have a problem with it. And I guess in one respect, if they weren't getting complaints from the tractor pulls they had there, we may not have any from the others. So it's all ahead.
Yeah. I'm always been a little surprised we didn't have complaints about that.
I got one more, sir.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I got one more, Bob, and I'm going to leave you alone.
That's fine.
In 407-5, number nine, it says buffer strip. A buffer strip according to standards, section 419 shall be provided. You know what that?
I think that's back to that 10-foot bumper, yeah, the typical distance buffer between non-compatible uses, basically.
Thanks, sir. Nothing further from commissioners? I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this motion? Don't everybody jump up all at once. Okay, hearing none. I will close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fur.
I moved it, we approve, I moved that the Stanley County zoning ordinance be amended to allow the use of campers and recreational vehicles in the campgrounds in the ordinance of general business zoning districts and lots of 12 acres or more be proposed in the language submitted by the board on the campgrounds. An appropriate recreation business use in general business district if all requirements in campgrounds are met.
Somebody made you say more words than you said all year.
They wrote it out for us.
I wasn't going to say that. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Fur. We have a second?
A second.
A second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, eye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Bob and Bailey, for attending us tonight. Bob, I noticed that you didn't go home with any prizes yet tonight, did you?
No.
Me, yeah, neither.
You know, Mr. Bailey's got a prize on her hand. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bailey's sporting a big rock.
What happened? She's engaged. Congratulations, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you.
She's like, you embarrassed me in front of our three YouTube viewers. One of them is Tyler and one's my mom. You're fine. All right. Next item on tonight's agenda is the opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution. Thank you, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. To date, the county has received roughly $382,000 in the national opioid settlement. It's anticipated that we'll receive another $191,500 before the end of fiscal year 2223. It's estimated that we'll receive 4.0, almost 4.7 million over an 18-year period. The Health and Human Services Board discussed the settlement funding and has made recommendations related to the allocation of this funding for the next year, and that is in your packet. One of the key initiatives the Health Department has utilized to mitigate the impacts of opioid misuse disorder is recovery support services. As such, it has recommended the county contract with Will's Place effective November 1, 2022 until October 31, 2023, for recovery support services, including but not limited to hosting 12-step meetings, providing recovery coaching, providing transportation to individuals to opioid misuse disorder-related detox treatment and recovery programming. It's asked that you review and consider approval of detached opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution that'll essentially allocate $45,000 for recovery support services to Will's Place, and that'll be distributed on a month-to-month basis as they invoice us. And so, obviously, we have a contract in place, there's accountability standards, there's performance standards, and so, obviously, if, you know, any of these entities that we contract with don't meet their, the performance standards and don't meet the financial standards the contract allows you to withhold the money and work through those things. So there's certainly protections in place for the county. So in your packet, you have the funding resolution, the memo from the Health Department, and as well as an email. The way our process currently works is that the entities can request funding, that funding request goes to the Health Department. If you recall, our Health Department sought a hundred, or a million-dollar HERSA grant several years ago, and as part of that HERSA grant, there was a lot of planning and infrastructure put around dealing with opioid misuse. And so there's a, there's a group that meets regularly, and so the Health Department has a really good feel for what's worked and what hasn't worked over the past three years with that HERSA funding. And so when any entity would like to request funding from this opioid settlement, the first thing we do is have the Health Department staff sort of vet that, and they have to provide, you know, what the scope of services they're going to provide, you know, for a period of time, how many people they're going to serve, what are the outcomes anticipated, how much money they're looking for, and so, and then obviously, those funding, that funding has to be tied to specific strategies that are outlined by the National Opioid Settlement Agreement. And so in your packet is an email from David Jenkins, where they support the $45,000 request from Will's Place. Initially, they had recommended 25,000, so if you look at the memo from the Health and Human Services Board, they initially did 25,000, but there's been funding flexibility because the HERSA money has not run out yet, and so we were able to extend the use of that funding for other, other services that we thought we would have to start sooner with the opioid settlement. And so they felt very comfortable approving or recommending the $45,000 for Will's Place to provide those recovery support services that we've mentioned. I'm going to stop there. I know that Allison with Will's Place is here this evening, I think members of our board, so if you have specific questions to the services, they may be able to answer them certainly better than we do. But again, this has been vetted by our Health Department and our Health Department staff that have been working intimately in this space for several years with this HERSA grant and are very aware of what services are working, what are, and they have recommended this and that, that information's in there, as well as the Health and Human Services Board. So I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. Commissioner Efer.
County Manager, the benchmarks that are set in place for this, who enforces that?
You mean, the benchmarks for what specifically? The contract that will services?
Right, yes.
Myself and the Health Department staff. Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
I got a couple of questions, and maybe Allison can answer this. Back in 2019, y'all had revenue of $106,000, and there was a thing where the county gave $26,000. Is that included in the $100,000 revenue?
Uh, yes.
And then in 2020, you had a revenue of $66,000, and $41,000 of that was from the county, from the HERSA thing, I think. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I know, I know, I know.
They've received funding through the HERSA grant in the past?
Correct.
For some of their services.
Y'all do wonderful work and everything. I do have a couple of concerns, and I wouldn't be doing my duty as a county commissioner if I didn't express them for moving forward and what the expectations will be. We also had, had bought a van for you guys at one point, and we had to take it back from y'all.
Correct.
And then my concern is that with the revenues, and this year y'all did $86,000, which is good, y'all had a better year with revenues than last year. I know that 2020, it was the year of the pandemic, so things were tough. But the two, one concern is that we did have to take a product back from you for not following through with whatever had, had happened there. And secondly, is the percentage of money that we're providing for you is an awful big percentage of your revenue. And I'm okay for maybe trying this for a year, but I would like to see your sources other than county, being from the county commissioners, as a nonprofit, I would like to see the percentage. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just want to say a couple of things. That's why we have, that's why the two programs we've, we've recommended to date, we've had year-long contracts, because we don't believe that these entities need to continue to come back to the well, because if they're going to be, if they need to sustain themselves, they don't, they need to find other, they need other sources other than this funding, because when it all runs out 18 years from now, and we still have these issues, that it'll be, you know, these agencies will be looking to the county to fund that, and that's, you know, that'll be a significant amount of money on an annual basis. So these are annual contracts that will be reviewed annually based on revenues, because these revenues are front-loaded. So the revenue, this 4.8 million is not going to be the same every year. It's for the first five years, we're going to be at roughly 350,000 to 400,000. But at, over time, those revenues decrease substantially to the end where the last five years of those 18, 18-year period, you're only looking at, you know, 150,000 to 200,000. So it's going to be imperative that these entities begin to, you know, wean themselves off of this, of this funding and find other revenue sources. The other piece of it is hopefully some of this issue, these issues go away, and that we can deal with the supply side, because that's part of this problem, is we have a huge supply side issue, this stuff streaming across the border from Mexico. And so hopefully, we can deal with that, and we can deal with, you know, obviously, the demand side, too, you know, with the, with the treatment and the recovery. So anyway, I'll stop there.
I just want to mention, I'm okay with giving a tribe, but my expectation is what I would like to see more of it to start getting more outside, to be independent on the county for this.
Yeah, I just want to address the, the HERSA grant. We, in 2020, terminated our director's employment, and there were a lot of conversations with our board and the Health Department. This is when Jennifer Layton was still involved with the Health Department and kind of overseeing the HERSA grant, and the Health Department was wanting to be very involved in the hiring of our next director to carry out the, the contract with the HERSA grant. We, after several meetings with the Health Department and our board, we did not feel that for a two-year contract, that the Health Department should, you know, be that involved in the hiring of, you know, our, our next director. So as a decision, we were fine with stepping away, the Health Department terminated- with stepping away. The Health Department terminated, saying that we were unable to provide the contract, which I'm sure, I mean, it's gonna be disagreed with both sides. We still did everything that was in that contract other than providing EMS language training to them. We still did the 12-step meetings, recovery program, and transportation. So, I would be happy to have conversations about the termination of that, but that, you know, that's a different conversation. Last year, 2020 was a rough year for donations. It just was. I would venture to say that was probably true for all nonprofits. Last year, we raised $90,000 completely from private donations. So, I do feel comfortable that we do what we have to do to keep going. And, and I'm sure, and we have hired, I'm the founder and on the board. I don't have a paid position with Will's Place. So, everything that I do is just to keep our, you know, doors open for the two employees that we do have and to provide. Our numbers, we have data. We track all of our data. Our numbers, you can look at them and prove how many people we're touching here in Stanley County. So, we are confident that we will meet all expectations with a contract. Yes, and the van was taken back, but we, didn't stop us from transporting people even though we did not have a van to do that anymore. So, we have overcome those obstacles and still provided our services completely free of charge to the county.
Ms. Chairman.
I make a motion to approve the attached opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution seeking to allocate $45,000 for recovery support services to Will's Place.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Chairman Almond, a second by? I'll second that. Commissioner Eifert, I saw you reach. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Next item up for tonight, Veterans Operation Green Light Initiative. As you all that don't know, this is Bo Almond, our Veteran Services Officer. Appreciate you coming tonight, Bo.
Ms. Chairman.
Where's yours, sir?
Commissioners, I appreciate y'all. This is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Stanley County have great respect, admiration, the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Stanley County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than 52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Stanley County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Stanley County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Stanley County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence adopted this third day of October 2022.
Thank you, Bo.
Ms. Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
First of all, just like to thank Bo and thank all those who've served in the armed services and those who've been in the military for my county. And also, just like to make a, a motion to approve this resolution supporting Operation Green Light.
You stole my thunder. I, I will second it then. Bo, thank you.
There's questions. Are you, maybe can you check it in as a?
Yes.
The chairman?
I can't, correct, yeah. Bo, thank you for what you, you do and for those that you work with. I, I won't be here much longer in this chair, but I was glad to see you come.
Thank you.
And I've heard great things since you've been here, all that you're in. If there's anything that, that I can do after I transition out, my phone number's not changing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments, Commissioner? All in favor, please say aye.
Thank you, Bo.
Thank you, sir.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion gladly passes seven to zero. Item number six on tonight's agenda, Ms. Kim Blackwelder, a presentation from Board of Elections.
Good evening to you all, Mr. Chairman, Board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm doing the department presentation for this month, and my name is Kimberly Blackwelder with the Board of Elections. I've been the director here since 2006. Our office operates with three additional full-time staff members. Tabitha Collingwood has been here with us since 2014. Andrea Clark has been with us since 2019. Alicia Rogers since 2021. Then, in addition to that, we have around 40 to 60 part-time temporary staff during election time, depending on how many early voting sites that we have. We also have between 170 to 200 election day precinct officials every election. All right, so what we do in the office is we break up election administration into 11 main areas, those being campaign finance, precinct officials, voter outreach, data analysis, file maintenance, website, equipment, voting sites, correspondence, statutory directives, and election tasks. And then, some of the things such as voter registration, since our, our office does that daily, that falls in the data analysis field or area of administration. So, from those 11 areas of administration, every two years, we do a project analysis where we take that area of administration, we subdivide it into two or three main tasks that's involved in that area. We set goals for each of those tasks as far as what we would like to accomplish. And one of the examples that I have up here on the screen is our precinct official category. So, we take that category, we divide it up into three main areas: recruitment and appointments of precinct officials, scheduling and communication with precinct officials, and training. We decide how much of, how much time we devote to each one of those areas. So, 41% is for recruitment, 28.2% scheduling, and 30.8% is training. Then, we detail out each task and just give you the nitty-gritty details about what each one of those things involves. And then, we, like I said, we set the goals. So, for precinct officials, one of the areas was recruitment and appointments. Our goals were to host information sessions throughout the year to try to spread the word about the need for precinct officials and exactly what the precinct officials are responsible for. And then, to appoint accordingly to their ability while meeting the legal requirements. So, we have party requirements that we have to meet. We have requirements for residency within the precinct that we have to meet. But we also want to put people who can use computers on computers. And we want to put people, and as chief judge, judges who are coordinators and who can manage and, and do things like that. So, that's just one of the 11 areas that we detail out. And you can find that information on our website. The project analysis is here on our website. We also have a virtual office tour. So, if you go to our website and you hover over the About Us tab, and you actually click on About Us, it brings up this box here. We do newsletters quarterly in off-years and biannually in election years. And like I said, our project analysis and our virtual office tour is there. So, that'll give you a little bit more idea about what we do when it's not election time and, you know, what our office looks like and, and some of the obstacles that we have in the office as well. So, some of our achievements that we have accomplished from our current project analysis, we did receive a wellness check by the North Carolina State Board of Elections in 2021. They send us a lot of questions to answer. They, they wanna make sure that we are doing retention, that we're doing, you know, everything that we should be doing. We keep, we're keeping records. And we did receive a, a good wellness check in 2021 from the state board. One of our other achievements are our social media presence and our accessible website. So, we've been trying to put more information out on social media that kind of combat some of the misinformation that's out there. And it could be things just as small as provisional ballots are not counted. If you voted provisional, it will not be counted, and that's not true. It could be anything else. We, we hear all kinds of misinformation that floats around from voters, you know, in primaries. If I'm unaffiliated, I can't vote in the primary. So, we try to put that kind of information out on our social media so that people are more informed and more aware of what the rules actually are. And then, our website is also accessible. We revamped our web, website a few years ago, and we re-skimmed it just a couple of years ago. So, a person who needs a screen reader, they can go on our website and they can read the page and be able to find the information on our website as well. A couple of other achievements, our voting site and equipment improvements. So, for our voting sites, we implemented, actually, in the primary was the first time we implemented our emergency crates. So, we provide them with extra lights, extra drop cords, just different things like that that they may need in an emergency if the power goes out. And these items are specifically for emergencies. So, hopefully, that will keep them voting if it's a minor issue. Also, with the equipment improvements, one of the pieces that we have added is the Express Vote, which you see over here to my right. This is our accessible unit. It allows someone who is blind, illiterate, or disabled to vote their ballot independently. So, it will read the ballot choices to the voter and allow them to mark those choices, either using the screen or using the touchpad, which also has braille. You can hook up other accessible devices to the machine as well, sip and puff and, and things like that for people who need those, those accessibility options. Some of the other equipment that I did not bring with me tonight is our DS450 scanner. That's a high-speed scanner that we used in the general election of, no, I'm sorry, the primary of 2022 to do recounts. We had a recount in that primary. So, that cuts our recount time down. It also, we process our absentee ballots through that machine. So, it speeds the process up for that. Then, voting system and office security, we have been able to implement controlled access in our office so we can monitor who accesses our office, the rooms within our office, what time, and things like that. So, we have a log of all that information. We also have 24/7 alarm and monitoring within the office so we can get that off of the video as well. And then, one of the other things was the, last year, I came before you to upgrade our voting system software. So, we now have what, what's called EVS 5240. That is just an updated version of the software that we run on our same equipment. It has more security features. The workstation that we use to program that information is a hardened workstation. It's never connected to the internet. So, it's, it's isolated, air-gapped, and secured. One of the other pieces of equipment that I forgot to mention is our ballot-on-demand system. We began using that this election. And that allows us to print ballots on demand. So, instead of having to purchase pre-printed absentee ballots, we can print those as we need them and mail them out daily. So, that in the long run will save money. We will not have to purchase as many pre-printed ballots and so on and so forth. Some of our future goals include our student ambassador program. We're hoping to work with the Stanley County schools to have a student ambassador at each high school who can help us recruit student assistants to work in the election. Another one of our goals is the election official training portal. In 2020, we did a lot of online training through Zoom and other things. And we, we hope to expand that in a way that we can get a lot of the information that the precinct official needs before they come to their hands-on class and work with the equipment. And that way, they can do that on their own pace. We can track who does it, things like that. So, that will be some kind of software or program that we'll be looking for in the future. Another item is mapping software. So, as the county grows, we are constantly adding new addresses into our system. We're also seeing a lot of growth in certain areas of the county. So, that's going to mean possible precinct realignments or precinct expansions, things like that. So, mapping software is something we will also be looking at. Right now, we use GIS. We use a state website, and we have to kind of piece all that together. If we had this, we would be able to have all that in one location, which would save us time as well. So, the last few slides that I have are just some statistics for you. So, our voter registration, and what I did is I took election years that are like the one we're in right now. So, this doesn't include presidential election years. But as you see for voter registration, our registration has grown from around 36,000 in 2006 to 2022, we're currently at 43,000 registered voters. Then, our registered voter turnout from 2006 to 2022, we had around 43% in 2006, and we've increased by about 5% every year or every off-year. So, our projected voter registration turnout for this election would be 59% for the upcoming November election. And then, we have a early voter turnout, which is based on a percentage of all the people that voted. This percentage voted early. So, if we had 34,000 registered voters to vote, then, and that's, that would be the presidential, which is not on here. But in 2020, we did have 34,000 registered voters to vote. And of those 34,000, 80% of those people voted early. So, that is a completely different percentage point than what I'm showing you on the screen here for the types of election that we're going into now. So, in 2006, 20% of the people, 26% of the people that voted, voted early. Compared to 2022, we're projecting that 43% of the people who vote will vote early. And some of the voting trends that we're seeing, voter registration turnout are steadily increasing each, each election cycle. Election day voting is heavier in off-years. So, more people go to the precinct to vote in a year like this. In presidential year, more people vote early. Big Lake Two, Far One, and Far Two, which are on the western end, now have over 3,000 voters. And Far One actually almost has 4,000 registered voters. And that is considered a large number of voters. When you're considering, if, if all those voters decided to wait to go on Election Day, there's basically, it would be impossible for us to process that many voters in one day. So, thankfully for us, we do have early voting, which relieves some of that burden. However, the western end is an end of the county that does vote more on Election Day versus early. So, that leads me to our future planning, which we are planning for growth. And as I mentioned before, realignment of precincts and precinct additions, especially in the western end, will need to be considered. We're seeing a lot of growth in the South Albemarle precinct, which is where some of those developments are being built currently. And then, another item that we're planning for is space. So, right now, we've, we've added several pieces of equipment which do require more space. If we add more precincts, we'll definitely need more space. And we have a lot of legal requirements, of course, for security purposes and things like that, that we need to contain everything and have it secured. So, right now, I tell everybody, we just rotate stock in the office. So, we just move things from one area to another so we can get to this and, and, and do that. So, that's something that is on our radar, is growth in space. Then, that's all I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. I, I actually did have, have one. Thank you, Ms. Kim. I actually did have, have one. I had a voter ask me something the other night, and I said, I'll go look this up for you, because, but I couldn't find it. I was looking for online a plate on our vote standing to like all of the offices running countywide on one page. Do we have it somewhere? The only thing I could do was print.
In this election?
Yes.
In this election. I believe we did take the filing document off, which showed all the candidates and all the offices, because we now have sample ballots available. So there is a section on the website where you can pull up your sample ballot, which would have all that.
Well, now I've got to pull up 23 PDFs and try to put all that together into one list. But it would just be a nice thing to know, both from the, it's not as important for a voter, because they're only going to vote their precinct. But it is very helpful for those of us in office, running for office, for those in political parties, be able to just look and go, okay, show me everyone running this county.
Yeah. We're going to add that back to the website.
Thank you for all you guys do. And if you're taking feature requests, there's one for me. But y'all, y'all get a lot of flack and people don't, before we all ran, we probably didn't know how much work you do. I don't know about them, but I know I called your, I know to have it on a personal basis. By now, every time I have to run, you know, it's a lot of phone calls. You guys always help out candidates. There's a lot of candidates running for a lot of positions. So I know that there's a lot of unsung work that you don't get ragged on for. But thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Fellow commissioners, questions, comments?
I just, I just got a couple. First of all, thanks for all y'all do. And thanks for, I'm one of those people that looking at the data, believe that the elections are very secure. And yes, there are some issues, but it's usually, a lot of it is employee situations where they miss, you know, mis-mark somebody or something like that. Couple of questions. 34,000 people voted in the presidential election, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And there's some people have, who think that we should only vote on election day. And should we do it with a paper ballot and hand count the paper ballot? This was the ballot from the 2000, from the, from the presidential election. Of the contested races, there are 26 contested races on this sheet of paper. How long and how many volunteers would it take to count 34,000 of these with 26 races? I mean, that's, is that even practical in this, in this day and age? And have the results within a reasonable amount of time? It's just ludicrous to even think that we should do that. And the same thing where people are talking about, oh, we need to just have elections on one day. People should show up one day. That's ludicrous also. You see what the problems are in the big city right now. And they even have the big cities, they have early voting, they have lines out where it takes people hours. We're lucky we're in the rural area where people could usually go in pretty quick and vote. There's usually not lines at the precinct. And I do have a couple of questions. Poll watchers. They've allowed poll watchers from every party for years and years and years, years, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But you have to go through a process, correct?
Yes.
And a training. You can't just show up election day and say, I want to go back there and watch some polls.
There is a process through the party. So the county party chair of that party would submit a list to our office and tell us who they would like to be observers. There may be some additional things that the party does on their side, but the only thing we do is accept that list. We have to make sure they're registered voters. And then they tell us if they want them to be at a specific precinct or if they want to be able to move around to precincts. But there's certain, you know, things we have to go by there.
Correct. And basically, someone can't just show up and say, I want to go back there and watch the polls. Because there's, are some rules they have to follow, like they can't, they just observe and can't do anything else. Also, if I wanted to vote twice, how difficult would that be? Like, say I sent in a mail, I sent in a mail-in ballot, and then I showed up that day to vote. What are the checks and balances to prevent that?
Well, all absentee by mail ballots and early ballots are all considered absentee ballots. So even if you come in person and vote before election day, you voted an absentee ballot. So all of that's absentee. Currently, the state law requires all absentee ballots to be retrievable. So we do put an identifiable number at the top of that ballot. So if I were to vote by mail and then I were to go to my precinct on election day, number one, it should be noted in the computer that I've already returned my ballot if I have done that. Number two, if for some reason I got through that, that part, and I was able to go in and vote on election day, then my absentee ballot would not be counted. It would be retrieved and it would be removed from the count. So I'm not going to say it's impossible to vote twice, but it's something that would be caught. And we do have ways to track that, those kind of things.
And then usually when you do audits and stuff, and when you hand count ballots and you run them through the machine to count them, which one's more accurate when you do that? Or which one doesn't change? The number stays about the same?
Well, I think you're referring to the sample audit count that we do. We do that after each election. So what happens is the state, a statistician draws two precincts at random that we have to count by hand after each election. So we pull in a bipartisan teams of precinct officials and they count those ballots by hand. Normally, it takes us about one to two hours to count one office by hand. And that's usually, depending on the election, around 300 to 400, could be 500 ballots. It depends on the group of people that you have counting. If they're, if they're on top of it and they're organized, then we don't have any issues. But we have had a group here or there that would, they wouldn't match the tape. And so we would have another group come in and count. And they would match, they would match the tape. So human error is, is more prevalent than machine error in those types of situations, is what I've found.
And then one more thing. How hard would it be to, because you hear these things about people just dump a lot of ballots in these drop boxes and stuff like that. All these ballots have some sort of marking that they'd almost have to know all those things that they're dropping, the person wasn't going to vote. They can't just drop ballots and have them counted if they have no reference for a check of ballot, check in.
Well, in North Carolina, yeah, in North Carolina, we do not have drop boxes. So you can't drop your ballot off in a box unless it's the mailbox. That's the only drop box we have. I don't, I can't speak to other states, but I would assume they have some kind of tracking mechanism. If it's a, if it's a state that's all by mail, where they mail ballots out to every registered voters, they would have a way to verify that that ballot was, was that ballot envelope and the, the information was signed by the voter. They would have signature verification. But in North Carolina, if you request a ballot by mail, you have to provide on the application, your date of birth, either the last four of your social or your driver's license number. So it's highly improbable that someone else could request a ballot for you and vote your ballot and do all that without it being noticed in some way. So.
Well, thank you very much. I think you had a little tour with the, didn't y'all do a tour with the ballots or something, the voting?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I hope that gives people confidence in our election system, because we've had that confidence until like two years ago. And it's a shame that that's what's happening, that people don't believe the results of elections anymore.
Thank you. And the machine will be available after the meeting. If you all are just dying to see how it works, I can show it to you. So I'll be available.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Commissioner Eifert?
Kimberly, early voting starts next week. What are the early voting sites?
We have two early voting sites for this election. We have one in Locust at the Joel Honeycutt Community Room, and then the one here at the Commons.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kim. That is it from, that is it for the big action items on tonight's agenda. Commissioners, you, you guys have got your consent agenda in your packet, assuming you reviewed it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to consider agenda be approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lawhan. He's on the beach and he wants to get back to his margarita. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Chairman Almond. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Consent agenda is done. That's it. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Fur?
Chairman.
Vice Chairman Almond. Vice Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lawhan.
No comment.
Commissioner Eifert?
Just a quick one.
Peter Quick or Real Quick?
No, it'd be, it'd be faster. It's faster than Peter Quick.
I just got one.
There's been a group of individuals and people from all over the county have been working on their Stanley County 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We've been working on that since January. We've had multiple meetings. We've had town halls throughout the county. The final draft of the plan is being prepared and is currently undergoing public review process. The county will host a meeting here in this room this Thursday, October 6th, from 5:30 till 7:30 here in the Jean McIntyre Room. Just, it's a drop-in event. And they'll have the maps and the text and all that will be here. And on behalf of the planning team and steering committee, we respectfully request your attendance at this open house on October 6th. Just if you have any questions, they can be answered then. But you know, think about 2040. That's not very far away, but we've been working on that plan again since January. We took a lot of public input on that. So I invite you to come out this, this Thursday, take a look at it.
Bob and Bailey, is that one of y'all's presentations you're putting together? Are you putting on for us?
With, with help.
With help. Thank you very much. Commissioner Barbie? Make sure she does.
Just two quick, well, actually, I just cut it to one quick thing. No, I went to, I went to the, the North Carolina County Commission meeting there and just let you know at the president's reception on the back, they, we lost three civic leaders this year, and they acknowledged it on the back, remembering our departed county leaders. Josh Morton and Donnie Joe Whitley passed away in the last year. Then also they acknowledged Jerry Myers as a former county manager for us. So.
That brings it to me. Almond, no comment. Can I seek a motion to adjourn?
Second motion.
A motion by Commissioner Eifert, I think, seconded by Vice Chairman Almond. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed today? We are adjourned.